Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, August 13th, 2020 meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Hetzke.
Hetzke here.
Canower.
Canower here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Hold on. Pete was saying he can't hear us. Pete, can you hear us? I don't think they can hear us right now. Dave, do we have audio going out?
I can hear you now.
Okay, now he can hear us, okay.
I couldn't before.
Okay.
All right, we restarted the meeting, went through the roll, and we're up to Jim Burton saying that he's here, and we need Jim to acknowledge that he's here. Okay, he waved.
Still here.
Okay.
There we go.
We hear you.
All right, we're having a rough time with the audio, fellas, so please bear with us. This is our, I'm not sure how many Zoom meetings we have held so far, but it seems that we will be continuing this for the foreseeable future, so please, everyone, have patience, because they never run absolutely perfectly. One other quick announcement before we get into our meeting, I...
He didn't finish the roll.
You didn't finish the roll. Okay, why don't you finish the roll?
Nurseinger.
I'm still here.
Sangster.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Wyser.
Here.
Gray, here.
All right, now we're done.
Back to you, sir.
Okay, so tonight, I am not real happy to announce that Zach Nurseinger will be leaving us. He has taken a job with an engineering firm north in New York City, right? And it's a bittersweet moment for all of us. He's been here for eight years and done a fantastic job, but we absolutely wish him well in the next chapter and every ensuing chapter of his life, success and happiness, and thanks for all your help, all your service, your friendship, everything, and good luck.
Thank you.
And...
Mr. Chairman, appreciate that. Appreciate all the board members and all my time here, working with everyone that's come across this room, this board.
Back there when we used to use it. Very thankful for everything that I've been through so far. It's been an absolute honor working with everybody.
Great, okay, so moving on.
And I'm gone, see ya.
All right, so we have minutes from the July 9th meeting. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to review them, and can we entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Tidings.
Any second?
I have to recuse.
Oh, you had to recuse. All right, I will second.
Only one agenda item.
Okay. We can still, everybody can vote on the minutes if everybody reviewed the tapes, so Lori, if you can possibly call the vote.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right, okay.
All right, so we have three action items for you guys. Oh, sorry, am I jumping ahead?
No, I was going to say Doug turned over managing the agenda to Doug Sangster, and in his enthusiasm, he jumped the gun a little bit, but that's okay.
All right, so we have three action items for you guys tonight. The first one is Penfield Square, and I think we have, um, do we have, we have Jeff, right?
No, Rob and Lisa.
Rob and Lisa.
But let's, before we go there, let's just show them the new drawing, and let's have the board have their discussion about what's been presented as option D. And Bob is recused from this.
On this, correct.
Right. Let the record show that board member Canower is recusing himself from this application.
So Doug, if you want to give them a recap of what we're seeing here for option D based on our last meeting, I think the board will be satisfied with it, but let's just give them a quick recap of what's been changed from option C to option D.
All right, so one of the things you guys requested was the brick on the facade that is shown in option D to add the brain weights coating around the building, except sort of the west elevation that's facing the memory care unit.
Yeah, just the north portion of that west-facing.
Yep.
Are there any changes that staff uncovered or anything on the drawings that were submitted as option D?
No, and we also sent this to your architectural consultant to confirm that all the changes are what you asked for, and we had that conversation probably over a week ago, so we're all set there. From our view, it's what the board has asked for, and the applicant turned it around very quickly. We just had to wait for this meeting to come up.
Yep.
Right, okay. All right, I'm satisfied. Terry, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Jim?
Okay.
I'll play quick with this.
Okay, okay, great.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, Terry, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
Yep.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. All right, Lisa and Rob, you are good to go. Thanks, and have a great rest of your summer.
All right. And your second action item is Canadaqua National Bank, 1998 Empire Boulevard. They're coming before you for a facade update, mostly new paint. One of the things they are looking for, and they will be going before the zoning board for, is they're looking to move the clock from the, sort of the tower at the corner of the building to a freestanding clock. They're going before the board for setbacks for that and for signage on the building. Other than that, it's a fairly simple new paint facade update.
My understanding is the clock is going to be a similar clock to what's at the four corners?
Yes.
In that little pocket park?
Yeah, a small freestanding, they call it a street clock.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Anybody have any comments on this?
It'll be a nice addition, match other branches, though.
And, and just for the record, we're welcoming back Bob Canower to the meeting.
Yeah, looks, looks good.
You good?
Yeah.
Jim, any comments?
No, I have no objection to this, AJ.
Okay. Would somebody like to move to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
So moved by Tiding, seconded by Canower?
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was Jeff.
All right.
Moving right along.
Yep, third action item for you guys tonight is Penfield Storage. They are coming back to the board to do a roof style change. I'll bring that up here for you guys. So the roof modification is to allow for better HVAC within the building for the climate-controlled storage. The building won't be any taller than what it currently was proposed at or approved at. It's simply just changing to a Gable style to better accommodate the HVAC.
Do you want to show them the rendering?
Yeah, the rendering, good question about the rendering. What view is that? Is that from the, let me think about this.
Yeah, I was trying to figure that out, too.
It's kind of like looking at it if you're looking north to south. Kind of like an aerial view from the street of, well, I'll say, the right side of the property. If you're looking closer to like the Home Depot side, you're looking up towards 441.
So I'm, this way, 441 is in the background.
That's actually, that's the back of the property, I'm sorry.
Yep, no.
We're looking, we're looking northeast almost, aren't we? Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, that's Brad.
Who's that?
Thank you, Brad.
Yeah, the awning is on the south elevation, the awning that you see.
Right, so the opposite end is the Penfield Road?
Yes.
Side. Okay. Anybody have any comments on this?
I'm excited.
Looks fine.
Jim, any thoughts? Okay. All right, somebody like to move to approve this?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, tidings.
So moved by Canower, seconded by Tidings.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Bash to, Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right.
All right, so that's it for our action items. Just as an update for the board on one of your health items, 1185 Empire Boulevard, Bayview Landing, they did make an application before the town board, and they had a public hearing on August 5th that was tabled before the board. They came before them for an apartment building behind, sort of behind where K2 Brewing is. We're expecting them to withdraw their application before you guys, or move to withdraw their application before you guys.
Okay. All right, so with no further business before the public hearing, I don't know if it's possible for us to recess for about seven, eight minutes by downstairs. Is that cool with you guys?
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
All right, all right, so we'll recess and reconvene at 7:00 for the public hearing. Back to the public hearing portion of the Penfield Planning Board's August 13th, 2020 meeting, and one thing that I would like to read from the governor, "Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the governor's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law. This meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Penfield's website, www.penfield.org, and on the Town of Penfield's Government Access Channel Number 1303. And the meeting will also be later transcribed, and pretend that this was read 30 minutes ago." We have two applications this evening. We'll be bringing in our applicants via Zoom. This process works 95% of the time very smoothly and 5% of the time not quite as smoothly, so if you're watching from home or on your PC or the boat or wherever, please have patience with us as we all navigate the new normal. And what will happen is we'll read the first application, the applicant will come into the Zoom meeting, give their presentation, the board members will ask the questions that we need to ask, and then we'll open it up for public participation. The public participation portion, you can call 585-340-8771 and get patched in by Scotty on the bridge downstairs, and, or you can visit the town's website. You like that?
At least you didn't call them out by name.
Or you can go to the town's website, penfield.org, and there should be a link on the homepage to the meeting, and you can submit your questions or comments electronically. We'll do our best to, if you call in, you'll be put in a queue, and I'm paying attention to computer screen here with calls and emails that come in, and as they come in, we get notified, and we will, you get to share your thoughts, and we welcome your thoughts. So with that, Doug, please read the first item.
First application, DSB Engineers 2394 Ridgeway Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14626. On behalf of U.S. Ceiling Corps, requests under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 of the Town of Penfield, of the code of the Town of Penfield, for preliminary and final site plan approval for construction of a 9,800-square-foot office warehouse building with associated site improvements on a 0.765-acre property located at 85 Sovereign Drive. The property is now or formerly owned by Rett Law, Rett Inc., and Zoned General Business, Application Number 20P-0008, SBL Number 093.15-1-2.116.
Okay, I need to interrupt one more time or interject. I've been told that board member Burton is recusing himself from this application. Is that correct, Mr. Burton?
Yes, correct.
Okay, let the record show that Mr. Burton is recusing himself. Okay, I think Mr. Walt Baker is on cue and up to bat, so Doug, if you can possibly...
Walt, if you want, you can share your screen if you want to show us anything, otherwise I can bring it up on my screen.
Can't hear him.
All right, we can't hear Walt.
Walt, make sure you're unmuted.
He is unmuted.
And you have a microphone connected to your computer.
It's a new computer, I hear.
Walt, we can't hear you.
Did we test him earlier?
No.
I'm wondering if you can hear me?
We can, yeah.
We can hear you, Pete.
Okay, so I got people with you.
Can he call in Zoom by the phone number just for audio?
Potentially. Should be able to, if he had to.
All right, we have him unmuted on our end.
Have Walt call us at the number he gave provided.
Okay. Hey, Walt, if you can hear me, do us a favor and call 340-8771, and downstairs will patch you in, because we're not getting your audio through your PC.
Thumbs up.
What was that?
I think Brian was talking to Amy.
Amy.
It was tough not to.
Hello?
There we go.
Hello, Walt?
Yep.
You may want to turn your computer audio down, like the sound down.
Okay, how's that?
That's good.
That's good.
We can hear you.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
As Doug mentioned, we're here tonight for preliminary final approvals for the office park for U.S. Ceiling at 857. And we submitted in our application for proposing the 9,800 square foot building. And the plans we submitted illustrate the site plan, the utility for grading, landscaping, and we did receive comments from the town staff, and we said we could comply with their comments. Also with me is Dave Wilder, the architect, which has submitted the building elevation. If you have any questions for him, get a little feedback.
Walt, do you want David to make any sort of presentation about the building at this point, or did you want to kind of recap that?
Basically, he submitted, he submitted the elevation, Dave can speak to that.
Okay. David, you want to try joining the meeting so we can see you and hear you? In the meantime, Walt, we can pull it up.
Yeah, we'll wait for Dave.
Yeah, well, the building, as the board recalled, we were in last year for a concept meeting, and we presented a perspective which is basically the same, same building plan as what was proposed at the concept meeting. And then we, based on the general building zoning, we had to go to the town board for approval, and then we needed zoning variances, so we went to the town board last, a year ago, last July. And then in August, we went to the zoning, in September, we went to the zoning board, received the zoning board variances, and so now we're back for site plan approval, and basically, the building is the same building we presented back at concept meeting.
Okay, I got a couple of questions for you, Walt, if you're ready for them.
Sure.
All right, can you speak to, it looks to me, based on the elevations, that there are overhead doors at both the north, the south, the east, and the west sides of the building. The west side shows an overhead door off of the smaller office annex portion, and there doesn't seem to be any pavement over there. It looks like that's green space as well as the, to the north of the building, at least on the site plan. The site plan doesn't show any impervious surface on the north side where that 16 by 14 overhead door is shown on the elevation.
Right. Yeah, David was working with the owner, and he wanted to have an accent door that's off the back of the office building to go down into a basement. And the rear garage door was to be on that north elevation. That's relatively new, so we're going to have to modify the pavement to get around the back.
Okay, so the...
Originally, he was going to have an elevated, like a loading dock, but he got rid of the loading dock.
Okay.
The loading dock was going to be on the east side of the building. That's been removed.
So the loading dock on the east side's been removed, but the overhead is still there, right?
Well, that, we had an edge raised garage door, but to the back of the east elevation, there was going to be a loading dock, and we get away with the loading dock.
Okay. So the, how does that introduction of new pavement affect your site coverage in terms of green space?
So we needed 35% open space, and the building and the pavement that we had was at 59%. So we still have about 16 or 8...
Six, maybe six percent?
Yeah, six, exactly, right. So we're going to have to modify the site pavement to accommodate that.
Okay. And then on the, going back to the west side off the office building part, I understand your comment about the owner having a desire for a door to go off of there down into the basement, but is that the man door on the northern part of that, or is that the overhead door that's more toward the center?
It's the man door.
So is the overhead door actually going to be there or not?
Well, the overhead door would be the taller building, the warehouse portion.
But the elevations are showing an overhead door on, if you look at the west elevation...
Right.
It shows two doors, a man door and a overhead, a smaller overhead door, but still an overhead door.
Right. I don't know why they put that on there.
Okay.
And Dave, I don't know if Dave's got it.
Because it doesn't show either of those two doors on the site plan currently.
Correct.
Actually, either of the three doors. Doesn't show the north, the door, the overhead on the north side, see the north elevation, or the man door on the north side.
Right.
So just hoping to get, get them both to match.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Could we get some detail on the lights that you have proposed, the light fixtures?
Yes, again, the architect was working with the owner. They were going to put building mount and down lighting. I think he submitted the specification for the lighting and the tidings.
I don't, we haven't, I don't think we've received that here at the, at Town Hall, staff? Nobody has record of that coming through, so maybe an email didn't, maybe it got lost or something. Maybe you could resubmit it?
Sure. If it's the owner and the architect picked those, I'll verify what they need.
Okay. And going back to the lock coverage of the 59% that you have, does that include the pavement on the property that's part of Sovereign Drive? Because then, it does, okay.
Yeah, it does impact. You see, the property line actually goes through Sovereign Drive.
Okay. Can you just give us a recap of the variances that you got from the ZBA?
What we went in for and received back in September last year, we had the front, which was actually the south elevation, required 80 feet, and we proposed 59, and we received the 21-foot variance on the east proposed line, proposed property line, was required 80-foot setback, and we're proposing 31, and we received that variance.
Okay.
And the west property line was a 20-foot variance, and we're proposing 28 feet, so we didn't need a variance, but we had to list it anyway. The south, or the other side, the north property line, we required a 20-foot variance, and we proposed a 15-foot, received that variance. The east property line, we needed a 30-foot variance, and we're proposing 20 feet, so we got a 10-foot variance on that. And then the north property line... And then the north property line, which because of the jogs in the property line, we needed a thirty foot setback. We're proposing nineteen feet, so we received the eleven foot variance.
Okay. Okay, and then how are delivery vehicles proposed to circulate through the site and make deliveries?
Well, generally, Ed was at the concept meeting, and this is a warehouse where he's going, when he gets deliveries, most of the deliveries actually go to the job site because he does drywall, metal studs, insulation. So most of the, most of the deliveries are delivered right to the project. So any deliveries that show up here are just limited to the drywall compound and materials that they don't put over there. He's only getting deliveries like once a week. And they would come in on that easterly and basically pull up into the building. They're supposed to come out the south elevation. And the new man, or the new overhead door on the door, I'm sure why he needed that to start with, because it didn't make sense to me. But they kind of talked about it with the architect, so.
Okay. So your understanding is they'd come in off Sovereign Drive, go probably inside through the east door.
Right.
Kind of loop around out the south door so that they can unload undercover?
Correct. And, well, you know, drywall, you don't want it out in the elements.
But is it, drywall, you had mentioned that the drywall, that, the big stuff would be drop shift to the site.
Right. He still has storage of certain materials, but he doesn't have the materials, generally, most of it shows up at the job site.
So the size vehicles that be making the deliveries, are we looking at like ten-wheel trucks, eighteen-wheel? What, you know, tractor-trailer type, or?
From what he was telling me at the concept meeting, it'd be like ten-wheelers, the city delivery trucks, not an eighteen-wheeler.
Okay. Okay? And how often do you think that happened?
What Ed was saying was approximately once a week.
Okay. Okay.
I've been to his office on numerous occasions, and there's hardly anybody there. You know, it's the administrative staff person and one other person, and it's there, he's out to the job site. But generally, there's hardly anybody at the office. And there's nobody I've seen at the warehouse.
Okay. Any, you guys have some questions?
I have one question, Walt. Dumpster pad, could you describe the fencing that you're proposing for around the dumpster pad?
Generally, we put the board on board unless the town requires it to be a block structure. But it's a metal building, so it's kind of hard to make it match, other than put up the board on board, contain it to match the building.
Okay, I think generally, we want something, obviously, that has some longevity to it, and also, of course, screens the dumpster.
Do you prefer the block structure?
If, if architecturally, you know, it would kind of fit with the building, I would say yes. But, you know, that's, I guess, whatever you feel is appropriate. Again, something that's going to last, not whether or deteriorate over a short period of time.
Okay.
Any other?
That was it?
That was it. Terry?
Yeah, I just want to confirm, Walt, on the color of the building, it's like a clay grayish color?
Yes, I wish Dave could get that, I don't know where Dave Goodenby is.
He's- So they did submit building material samples to us digitally. I can bring them up on here for you guys to show.
Oh, okay, cool.
Great. Good. Thanks, Walt.
Okay. Looks like I need to log in again. I got so caught up in this, I ignored-
Your other job?
I ignored my other job. I guess I'm never going to be hired as a DJ or anything. Okay, what I'd like to do at this point is open it up for public comments. And if anybody out there in the rest of the world would like to make a comment on this, we welcome your comments. You can call us at five eight five three four zero eight seven seven one. Or visit www.penfield.org and submit a comment electronically. I'm looking at this computer screen right now, and it doesn't show anyone that's online right now interested in making a comment. Just one thing, we will continue to take comments for the next few days. So if you can't get to a phone, or can't get to a, well, if you're watching this, you're in something electronic, so. Your comments are still welcome, so. If we have no public comments, no other comments from the board?
Nope.
Okay, just one more quick question, Walt, if you don't mind. Snow storage and removal, what's the, where do you plan to store that?
Obviously, the green space that we have, and if it becomes too much, like I said, it's is, staff is limited, even though the parking, we showed all the parking spaces, we don't need those. There are only an eighty-two or three parking spaces. So basically, to the west end of the parking area, we could obviously store snow there. And if it gets to be too much, he's going to have to truck it off, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Just one more time, board members, no more comments?
Good, thank you.
Nope.
Still nothing from the public? All right, Walt, thanks for the presentation.
All right. I don't know if you got feedback, but if I get feedback, I'll-
Well, a little bit, but nothing that we can't handle or haven't experienced before. So we will take all the comments of the presentation under advisement and move on from there. Thanks for, thanks for coming.
All right, appreciate it.
Okay, Doug, if you want to, we can move on to the next present, next application.
All right, application number two, BME Associates, Ten Lift Bridge Lane, Fairport, New York, one four five zero.
You're good.
On behalf of Penfield Wesleyan Church, requests under chapter two fifty, article twelve dash eleven, or eleven, article eleven dash eleven dot two of the code of the town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision approval for two-lot subdivision to create a new parcel for the church and a separate parcel for the single-family residence on the existing six point nine four nine acre property located at fifteen eighty-six Five Mile Line Road. The properly, the property is now or formerly owned by the Penfield Wesleyan Church and Zoned Single Family Residential, R one twenty. Application number twenty P dash zero 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 nine, SBL number one zero nine dot zero three dash one dash ten dot one.
All right, looks like we have Greg. Oh, I'm going to interject, I believe Board Member Burton will be rejoining us for this application, so welcome back, Jim. And I think we have Greg from BME on the line.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead and-
Do you want to note that Pete Weisauer will be recusing himself?
Oh, yeah, one thing I will note, that our planning board attorney, Pete Weisauer, is recusing himself from this application. Okay, Greg, you're on.
All right, thank you, good evening. My name is Greg, I'm with BME Associates. I'm here representing the Penfield Wesleyan Church for the subdivision application. The church currently owns the property at fifteen eighty and fifteen eighty-six Five Mile Line Road. Their current property consists of seven point two seven four acres of land and contains religious church building and a single-family house. The church is proposing to subdivide the property into two parcels, or by separating the religious church building from the single-family house. The proposed lot, R two A, will be six point three two one acres and contains a religious church. The proposed lot, R two B, will be zero point nine five three acres, contains a single-family house and an accessory structure. This project requires three area variances, which we're on the ZBA agenda for next week. Proposed lot, R two A, area variance requested is for the church setback of fifty-one feet on the proposed south property line, where a hundred feet is required. Proposed lot, R two B, requires two area variances. One for an accessory building, accessory building size where four hundred fifteen square foot is required, and seven eighty-two square foot is proposed. The other variance requested is for the accessory, the same accessory building setback, setback of ten point seven feet on the south side, where fifty feet is required. Both area variance requests for lot R two B are for a pre-existing accessory structure. At this time, I'll entertain any questions.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Terry, you want to start off?
Yeah, Greg, have you addressed the comments from the PRC?
I did.
Okay, and you don't have any issues with any of that?
No, no, I, we added, there's only three comments, we added a few notes to the plan and resubmitted.
Okay. And now, what do you, is this land, the house and the barn, or whatever you call that structure? So the plans are to sell that, or is already sold off?
It's not sold. I think, I mean, they don't have any potential buyer, if that's what you're asking. I think what they want, what the church wants to do is just have a position themselves so that they could tell if need be.
So it's presently vacant, then? Structure, it's vacant presently? That lot, that house?
I believe so.
All right, so pretty simple, so you got to go to ZBA for three or four variances, and that's it, right?
Yep.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay, Greg, there was some comments about the current path or sidewalk that runs in between the two properties. And some suggestion that it might be a good idea to remove that, I believe. Is that, can you speak a little bit to that?
Yes, they are going to remove that sidewalk, and there's a note, and that indicates a concrete walk to be removed. They are going to, part of the PRC comments was to leave a little, a little pad at the entrance of the church, which they will.
Okay. All right. And any other questions from the board? Bob, anything?
No, I have no other questions.
Okay, Jim? Okay, I saw Jake's head, but he's got no sound again. Okay, thanks. Zach, you had a comment?
Yeah, I have one comment from staff for the board to consider, and one for the applicant. It's regarding previous discussions at the town here about this location where the church lies between Roethlisberger Park and the subdivision to the north. We're aware that there's a common footpath that's been kind of informally established over time to allow for residents of that subdivision to travel south to Roethlisberger Park. And whether it was during the open space plan, or during the master plan for Roethlisberger Park, early in the two thousands, there was always a proposal or some sort of intention from the town to perhaps find an opportunity to seek a pedestrian access easement on this property to legally provide that to the residents and to Roethlisberger Park. So my question for Greg, and I'm not sure if he's able to answer it on this spot, but maybe he is, is if the church is amenable to a pedestrian access easement around the perimeter of the property, where applicable, to provide that access from our hammerhead turnaround at the south end of the subdivision that meets the north property line of the church's property, and carry that down along the east property line of the church to the corner at Roethlisberger Park. I think our staff would be supportive of that, based on just historical conversations that I've been made aware of that predate my time here, but I was made aware of them this week. Greg, I'm not sure if you can speak to that, but do you have any response to it?
I do, I was made aware of this this afternoon, prior to the meeting. I did have brief discussions with our client. It's, for something like this to happen, it's going to take time. The church has to, there's several layers and levels of authorization that needs to happen for a church to make a move like this. I'm not saying they're not opposed to it, I'm just saying that they, it's something that they really have to consider because of, just on the timing of making these special meetings with their congregation. And then once that gets approved, then it has to go up to the district level, so it would be some time just to make this, that access easement doable, if you will. They would, again, I'm not going to speak for the church, because I would have to talk to them and see where they're, see where they're at. The one thing, though, that was a bit disappointing, I'll say, is the fact that this is just brought up now, this afternoon, just before this meeting. It's my understanding that the church have been in discussions with the town since, going all the way back to the end of last year. And if this were, were, or came up at that point, the church would have had time to kind of get their ducks in a row if they were going to grant an easement of this type and make it available. So, like I said, I would have to go back to the church and find out if this is something that they want to agree to.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that, totally understand. I know I also had the conversation with the church. It sounded like they were agreeable, as you said, not opposed to the thought of it. And it sounded like they were also willing to at least show a proposed easement on the map, perhaps as a condition of approval of this board. So I think that's something that could be added to the map. And then, as you said, there are layers to that process, and we could work with them to get through those layers as long as they remain agreeable to this.
Yeah, I would say that they, I mean, if you, that one map we showed, sort of, that aerial that shows the existing path, you kind of make it out a little bit where it's worn down. Obviously, that, to put an easement over that doesn't make any sense.
I agree.
And I do, and I would agree that if there were going to be an easement, that would be kind of wrap around the property so as not to inhibit the property in any way.
We agree totally, Greg. We would never want to bisect the property with an easement like that. It's more if that trail become, if that footpath becomes a little more formal, now we have a legal means of access to provide it on the perimeter of the property without impacting the property itself.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I will go back to the board. Any comments based on that new information?
Good.
Nope.
Okay. We do have a few submitted comments. The first one that came in was from Steve Powell, 28 Mount Eagle Drive. And his comment is regardless of the outcome of this meeting, will the 6.9 acres of property remain in the ownership of the church? Can a developer purchase a portion of the property from the church to build on it? So I guess the first part of that question, Greg, is that the lot, what is it, Lot R2A, going to remain under the ownership of the church?
It's my understanding that the church is going to retain the religious, the lot that contains a religious structure and they have, at this point, have no plans of bringing further development.
Okay. And I think that I can potentially speak to the second part. It is a residentially zoned parcel. Churches are conditionally permitted use in a residentially zoned parcel. And that doesn't mean, unless there are some deed restrictions or something that I'm completely unaware of. It is possible that in the future, if the church goes out of business or something changes, that could, a developer could conceivably purchase that and build homes. But I don't believe that anybody has that intention at the moment. I'm certainly not aware of any intention at the moment. And if staff knows of any misstatement that I made, please let me know and I'll correct myself.
The only thing I would add to that, the only thing I would add to that, AJ, is that as the church, when the, as the, the church is only required to have, they're required to have a minimum of five acres if they continue to operate there. So with the remaining acreage that they have, six point, forgive me the number, 6.3 and five acres, there's just over an acre left of potential anything, but that would prove to be pretty difficult given the existing conditions out there. So as you said, you nailed it on the head, if this, if there's a day where the church is no longer needed on that property and they are no longer at this location, they relocate, sure, something could happen in the future, but we don't have a crystal ball and neither does the church, so we don't know when that will happen. Everything that we've seen and has been presented to us indicates that the church will remain the owner of this property and the six acres for quite some time.
Right. Okay, thank you for expanding upon that. We also have a comment from Samuel Hartley, 1592 Five Mile Line Road. In regards to the variances, what are the implications for my adjoining property if the variances are out of spec?
Is that it?
So... 1590?
1592 is the property just south of the rest.
Yeah, so just south, your property, Mr. Hartley, is just to the south. The variances are for a, it would become a pre-existing non-conforming use on Lot 2B for that accessory structure, that storage, I think it's a storage building out, that's currently there. And that on a lot that is probably less than five acres, that size is currently not allowed. But in cases like this, applicants typically go to the zoning board and ask for a variance so that they don't have to tear that building down.
I would say his question is certainly probably more appropriate for the zoning board, so if he would like, between now and next week, he can email the zoning department, zoning@penfield.org is their email address, or contact their department to discuss the area variances and the natures of them. I certainly encourage him to do that and/or put his thoughts in writing and that can be presented to the board in advance of the meeting as well. So there are multiple avenues to approach the area variance questions with that board.
Yeah, and I don't, honestly, I don't really see any implications for your property based on this. Really nothing would change if the variance is granted from a physical standpoint to your property or to this property. Okay, if we have... I don't believe we have any other comments from the public. Once again, I will reiterate our phone number, 585-340-8771. Or you can submit your comments online, www.penfield.org, and we will read them. With their, any other further comments from the board?
I'm good, thank you.
Nope, good, good. Jim, you're good?
Good.
Okay, we have no additional public comments. Greg, do you have any final words?
No, no, I would hope the board is in favor and supportive of this project and we'll do whatever we can to make it happen.
Okay, great. Thank you for your presentation, and we will call this hearing closed.
Greg, if you stick around, we will have a work session immediately following this and you can hear the board's deliberation on it as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that concludes our, the public hearing portion of the meeting. We are going to go back into our work session and finish up our discussion and gather our notes from the public hearings and make our decisions for the evening. So if we go back to...
Do you want to stick?
Well, do you want to stick with this one?
Yeah, let's stick with this one, get while Greg's online, and let him go back to his family.
Thank you.
Sure.
Family show.
For my partner.
We promote family values here in the town of Penfield. Okay, thoughts? How critical this easement? I get the idea of the easement. I think it's a great idea. Is it a deal breaker? My thought was we have a draft approval resolution. And is this something that we need to put the brakes on that, or can we keep moving forward or?
We can add it as a, as a condition under that and just see, on a temporary, but just add it as a, as a maybe on the resolution pending the approval of, I'm assuming it has to go between like the church deacon board or get voted on by the church membership. So we could put it on there sort of conditional on the church membership or the deacon board essentially approving it.
Yeah, I mean, I just candidly, I, to me, it's a great idea to have it there. The fact that there's a path that's clearly visible there that for probably years and years people have been using. And it's a shame that it wasn't mentioned earlier when they first came in, if that's in fact the case. But it is a great idea and I'd like to have it in there. I just, you know, how do you, as long as we can do it in a way that...
We can capture your support in the resolution and write the language such that we pursue an easement with the church that's at their speed and follows their approval process for obtaining it.
Yeah, all right. You guys good with that?
That's the best way to do it, you know, I mean, yeah. I mean, there won't be a problem. They got to go zoning anyways, we got to...
Right.
So it's going to be a conditional that the zoning proves their variance at the beginning with.
Correct.
And then now, if we throw that condition in there.
Is all things that can be hashed out after the fact and wouldn't prevent this board from granting a conditional approval pending the outcome of the zoning board and us working with the church after that?
Right, any other comments? Bob, Jim?
And I think that'll be helpful to them too, as opposed to just, you know, tabling it, waiting for ZBA, you know, just, you know, put them back. So if we can do it, put both conditions in there, I think that's the way to go.
All right, you're good with that?
It's reasonable.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, I'm in favor of Terry's idea. They've got to get three variances anyhow. Let's table this and make sure that they have the variances that they need from the ZBA and see if we can get some formal feedback from the church on their intent to enter into positive language for easement.
Sorry a minute, was that what you said?
No.
No.
Jim, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't put it out there right now. I was just thinking to go ahead for the resolution this evening based on the conditions from zoning and the easement, as opposed to tabling it and putting everything off because that's going to put them back either farther, I was thinking.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
How does the rest of the board feel about Terry's proposal?
I'm fine. Personally, I'm fine with that. I...
I think that's a good approach.
Okay, so do you want to go ahead and?
Before you act on the resolution, we also prepared an EAF.
Okay, so we need to vote on the EAF.
Okay.
Somebody want to move to?
I'll make the move to approve. Yep, for EAF.
I will second.
So we have a motion to sign the EAF by Tidings, a second by Kenauer.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye. Now I'll make the motion to approve the resolution based on the conditions that we discussed.
And I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Tidings, a second by Kenauer to approve the subdivision with the conditions that were discussed this evening.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. All right.
You're all set, Greg. Thank you very much.
You're all set. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, let's go back to the building on Sovereign Drive. I think we need to...
Hold on. Burton.
Oh, right, Burton's out.
Recused is the word we're going for. Have a good night, Jim.
Actually, Jim, you probably, I don't think we have any business after this, so if you want to sign off, go right ahead and enjoy, enjoy the rest of your evening, as long as you're watching.
Nice.
All right. I just lost all the video feed on the, well, looking at a screensaver. Okay.
Whenever you switch something, it minimized the participant view.
I didn't, that's, no, that's, that's PC TV side.
Oh, they're playing, okay.
Yeah, PC TV's playing with that, no. Everything's...
Nobody left on Zoom.
Oh, that's why.
Okay, yeah, air still.
Well, you are, AJ, unless you want to have double screen.
I'm on Zoom. And I'm, I'm a nobody?
Yeah.
I'm nobody.
Well, it's like you dismissed me at the beginning of the meeting, that welcome to the club.
Yeah, what goes around comes around. All right.
I still have some contributions.
Fair enough, fair enough. All right, Doug, let's talk about Sovereign Drive. Obviously, we got to table this. Looks like they have some work to do to match up the elevations and the impervious surfaces. Those, to me, are those are the biggies.
And we're still waiting on, the PRC sent a memo to them and requested revised plans. We're still waiting on those as well, so that would...
Okay. So any other items that staff is waiting on?
Sounds like we need lighting. We need some turning templates.
Yeah, we need the lighting cut sheets, isometric foot candle plot.
I'd like to see the turning template of the delivery vehicle, just to make sure we're not going to demolish a building in the process of dropping materials off. I know when we first talked about this, there was an 18-wheeler discussion, so I'd like to see it in writing in response to your tabling resolution. And Mike, you had?
Well, now that they brought up the whole adding an overhead door on the north side and adding possible more pavement, I'm more concerned with is the stormwater facility sized appropriately with the addition.
Okay, so obviously, they got to make sure that that all works, right?
And then with the door on that west side, that goes right into their stormwater facility. What's the purpose of that?
Right.
You asked that question a few times, so hopefully we get some clarification on it.
Right. Yeah, it's possible that that would be, well, if that's going into a basement, you know, it just depends on what's going down. There's a workshop down there that, you know, they want to be able to get equipment down, you know?
I think it's fair to ask, why can't that door be internal?
Yeah, I mean, I do see people that...
I don't know if it's necessary as a point of egress. They have the front door there.
Did we even know they were going to have a basement?
No, not tonight.
Yeah, I was not aware.
All right.
Nothing that says they can't.
No, but I'm more concerned with, again, with the stormwater and the proximity to the basement. If that's truly where it is, then, you know, hopefully they don't flood their own basement.
Grading right up to it.
Usually for a residential, we have a 100-foot requirement from any stormwater facility to a structure so that provides protection from, you know, flooding.
Right. I think that should be part of the tabling resolution.
I think it will be. Mike's going to write that part.
He's an engineer. Does he know how to spell?
He's got the numbers. That's all I care about.
Spell check.
I guess I'm on my way out.
I'm not scoring good points tonight.
Valentine's coming back.
Oh, man, all right. Anything else?
Fence detail around the dumpster.
Yeah, dumpster enclosure. Good call, good catch.
Is that basement? That's not a full basement.
We didn't even know they had a...
First we've heard of a basement.
There's nothing on site plan or anything indicating.
So they need to show on the footprint where that is.
And then another point that you just brought up, Bob, about the dumpster enclosure, if they're having a door and they're adding pavement, is that going to remove the dumpster enclosure? Because how are they going to access it?
Oh, because the enclosure's in the way.
Right.
Yeah, so they'd have to relocate that.
All very good points.
We'll send them a link to this video so they hear this conversation too.
Right. Okay. Anything else from staff?
No.
That's all we have.
Okay, not that you can't think of something after the fact. You certainly can. All right, I will move to table this.
I'll second it.
We got it seconded, so I tabled, Hetzke tabled, and Tidings seconded, or moved, I moved to table.
We get it.
I'll move to your move.
Tidings seconded. Hetzke, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, that's tabled. Doug, any other business that you need to discuss or bring up before the board, before we adjourn? Zach, it's been nice knowing you.
Thanks, Zach.
Thanks for all your time.
Thank you again, everybody.
Congratulations.
See you on the other side.
Yeah, don't be a stranger.
You know where to find me.
Come back and visit.
I'll be up in Westchester.
Keep us informed of events in your life and so on.
You'll be the first to know.
And good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, with that? Alright, with that, I guess with no further business tonight, we will adjourn. Thanks everybody for watching and coming and have a great rest of your week and month. See you in September.
September, we're gonna get a summer.